This conference will now be recorded.
Good evening. We'll call to order the meeting of the Stratford Zoning Commission at 7:00 PM, October 28th. For the record, Commissioner Baccola is not able to join us today, but we will have Commissioner Fredette, alternate members sit in his place. However, when we get to the item on Igor Sikorski Airport, all members are welcome to contribute to the discussion. So, Mr. Wynn, you can hang around for that, okay? Okay. First item of business is approval of the minutes of the September 23rd, 2020 meeting. Do I have a motion? Mr. Francis, is there a second? Mr. Vigliotti, any discussion, corrections, changes? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
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 Close no. Carries unanimously. Okay, Jay, let's go through the Zeddy Campsite Review.
No.
Any zoning enforcement complaints? Anybody on the board? Hearing none. Swiss Reapartments?
No new applications.
Sediment and erosion?
Nope, nothing new.
And anything from our friends on the planning?
Nothing to be discussed this evening.
Very good. Okay, the reason we're really here today is for the Igor Sikorski Memorial Airport Master Plan Report comments. It has been distributed to us. The mayor's made a request that all of the land use boards chime in, not only in the vein of what is in our usual area of expertise, but because there's also, for most of the members here, we've been involved in the community in different capacities for a number of years, elected and appointed, community service, and just being residents, so we might be able to offer some insight on the plan and some constructive comments on that. Jay, do you want to give a little bit of intro as well?
Sure. Jay Hibansky here. So, City Bridgeport has been working on their master plan for the airport for, I would say, the past maybe year and a half, maybe two years, in an effort, I believe, to receive funding, to improve the airport, expand the airport. They're ineligible to receive any funding until they have their master plan complete. So, this is a critical part in their development process for them, or expansion process, from what my understanding is. They've hosted, the City of Bridgeport has hired a, an airport planning firm, who's worked on a lot of, a lot of airport master plans all over the East Coast, but I believe nationally, they've hosted anywhere between, I think, maybe eight, maybe nine public information sessions. I've attended almost all of them. They haven't really had anything in person this year, obviously. Well, they may have had some early, early in the spring. And so this is a part of their required, required part of their process. They need to take a public comment. Now that the, the plan has been drafted in its entirety, although not complete, a part of that planning process requires them to take public comment. And here we are as Stratford residents, or you all, I'm sorry, are as acting as Stratford residents, given the opportunity, as Chairman Silhavi mentioned, to weigh in on the plan. And not only as your, in your capacity as zoning commissioners, but, but also as uber-informed or hyper-informed residents of the town of Stratford. I mean, you folks really hear and see what's going on. And I don't think your comments need to only fall within the purview of your, your responsibilities as zoning commissioners, but as just Stratford residents. So, with that, I mean, I will, I don't want to speak too long. I think this is really about you all giving, having the opportunity to, to get on the record what you think is being done well, what you think is maybe missing, any recommendations that you may have for, for the plan. And then I will take those comments and just put them in an informal letter to the mayor's, email to the mayor's office, and then they're going to compile all the comments from all the land use commissioners, as well as other stakeholders in town, and give a, give one unified letter of public comment for the master plan on behalf of the town. So, with that, I'll turn it back over to the chairman. If anyone has any questions, feel free.
Anybody have any questions or want to start the discussion? If not, I'll say anything.
I mean, I'll start if you'd like.
Yeah, go ahead, Mike.
So, I kind of, I mean, it was a big, long report. I read through parts of it. I don't know that they've ever really been good neighbors over there. So, you know, but reading through the report, it kind of seemed to me like they didn't put much thought into the quality of life for the residents of Lordship and, and the surrounding areas. You know, I read parts about how they want to fill in the wetlands. You know, they want, they're doubling the existing storage space, which means, I would assume, we put more planes there, then you would have a whole lot more flights in and out. And if you double the storage, you know, hypothetically, you're going to double, at least double the runway usage. There was a part where they talked about, you know, acquiring the property from Stratford. So, you know, I don't know how that plays out, you know, a little island in the middle of Stratford owned by Bridgeport. They pay no taxes there at, at the moment, I don't believe. And that's always been a point of contention. But I don't see anything that says, hey, you know, we really care about Stratford and want to make this work for everybody. The other thing is, is with what they were doing, I think it would, it would make us unable to use the space. Right now, it's the town dump, and I could be wrong, but right now that, where the dumping, dump area is, is not used for anything besides that. But if the town ever did decide to clean that up and use that for something, whether it's parks, or turn it over to, you know, residential community, commercial development, whatever it might be, that would negate our ability to do that, you know. So, it looks like they're expanding the airport. It's just, you know, Sikorski Airport on steroids is what they're looking for. And I don't see anything that says, hey, you know, this is good for Stratford. So, my biggest concern, or my only concern really is, you know, what's good for Stratford? And I just, I don't see it with this plan. I see it as, you know, Bridgeport, once again, not, not, not concerned or not caring about the neighbors. It's not, it's not attached to their, to their city limits in any way. So, what do they care what they do, or the inconvenience, or, or the destruction of quality life, or surrounding areas? I don't get the impression that they really care. So, I can't see supporting this in any way, shape, or form. So, but that's just my, my initial comments.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Fredette?
I agree 100% with what Mike is saying. We have had this problem with Bridgeport for many, many years. They've always treated us like the ugly stepchild, and they truly would love nothing better to just, you know, take that property for as cheap as they can and do what they want, and still leave us with nothing. So, but I agree with what Mr. Hendrick is saying.
Okay. Want to chime in?
This is Commissioner Francis. I actually agree with Mr. Fredette and Mr. Hendrick. They, from, from what I read, they had no concerns of the quality of life, the wildlife. I see no plan in there to do anything to actually have the responsibility of the roadways and structures in the vicinity of that area. It, it just seems like they didn't care about the town, period. They just want to expand on what their agenda was without the consideration of the community. It just seems reckless, and I don't agree with, with their agenda that's laid out.
Mr. Vigliotti or Mr. Wynn, you want to add anything?
I would add something. I totally agree with everybody on who has went ahead, Mr. Hendrick, Mr. Francis, Mr. Fredette, that I don't approve this plan based upon, there's not, there's really no benefit to the town. We can compare it to New Haven, where they do have an airport, you know, there's more traffic, but then is it bringing more residents to town? Is it kind of deteriorating to the surrounding area? The plan likely has more work than it said, right? The air pollution. And they're talking about how the, the birds are affected, and how, it was kind of a negative drawback to me when I was reading about that, that more and more birds will be affected in the area as well, just from more fights coming in, so destruction of the wetland in the area. So, I, I'm, I'm in agreement with all the other commissioners as at this point.
Okay. Mr. Vigliotti, you want to take a whack?
Yeah, thanks. Mr. Vigliotti, so they mentioned noise abatement in Section 2. They say that airplanes, or current aircraft, can't take off or land if the noise is above 82 decibels. But then they're also recommending critical new airplanes, Bardier Global Express and the Gulfstream 500. But there's no mention made, or there's no information about how loud those airplanes are. You know, so, so like, how does that relate to the 82 decibel level that we have now? There's no, there's no mention of that. They talk about surface water, and they, they don't, they, they, that's part of their plan, but they don't mention any information about the impact on surface water. They, they have a section on groundwater, but they don't mention the impact on groundwater if they, if they expand the airport by doing any paving. In, in the section on stormwater, they acknowledge that additional paving will require additional drainage, but there's no specifics about what they're going to do about that. And then also, there are other mentions about the biotic communities within the airport. And they recognize that the expansion of the airport might have impacts on that, but they say that any report about the impact would have to come at a later date. Same thing with threatened and endangered species, coastal zone management. So, they, they have all these boxes, or they have all these subheadings on all these issues that will impact the project. But other than mentioning that there will be an impact, there's nothing specific. So, if anybody was, wanted to support the project, they, they don't have enough information or enough detail to do it.
Okay. So, I was looking through it, and I agree with the, what all the members were saying. We've not been in the best relationship, and I think that's been generous over the years. I probably still had my zoning hat when I was looking at this, and there was a number of discussions about possible redevelopment in the apron areas, and they, there's a northeast, south, and west ones, different areas, and this is on page 118 of it. And, you know, just what I find interesting is that the stated goal here is the reacquisition of passenger service, which actually I find a little short-sighted in, in consideration of the situation that we're in now. Commissioner Wynn mentioned Tweed, New Haven, and I did read recently that the US, I'm sorry, American Airlines was actually going to be reducing its, or if not suspending its service into Tweed, New Haven, just because of the very drastic reductions in passenger service, passengers all over right now. Nobody's flying is the bottom line there, and it's caused a huge contraction within the airline industry. And I find it interesting that, I did, I did a word search in here on, just on the word Amazon. It seems like they were very much concerned with the passenger side of it, but yet if they had been in a true partnership with us, they might have been aware that, you know, Amazon has been developing commercial entities here in Stratford, and I think I read just recently that they're going to be planning one over in Orange. So, I mean, if they were looking, I, I almost wish they had been a little bit wider in their view of potential things for the airport, to align with something that would actually benefit the town, as we said, because if we're going to be a, we've actually made some great strides in, in some of our commercial development, as far as distribution and logistics, and certainly that there would be an opportunity to partner there. But, you know, that didn't seem to catch too much of a mention, at least that I saw it. It might be in there. It's a 200-page document. It was kind of hard to find all of it. So, I mean, it mentions some development opportunities, and I know it went into quite a discussion on the key hangers and so on. And I don't know if Mr. Fredette or Mr. Hendrick were on the board. I know I was when we started talking about the key hangers about, geez, I don't even know what that was, like, seven years ago, something like that. It's probably been a relatively benign use. But again, it's seeing how that you realign this, you know, there could be opportunities here for other types of development within those areas. But again, you do have to be concerned with the traffic patterns. And I know that we were really, yeah, Lordship itself is very interesting, because sometimes people jokingly refer to it as the island, but it really is very much a, a separated piece of land, where there's only two ways in or out, and one being the, the main street, the other being the, what's locally known as the Burma Road through there. So, it, you do have to be concerned that any development within that area could have a very serious impact in the amount of traffic that is generated on the streets, you know, surrounding it. So, even the development of the, like, the northern apron, as they mentioned, could have a significant impact on the, on the, on the traffic patterns and how much congestion there is. You know, obviously, we, we've all long hoped that there would be some development over at the Army Engine Plant. It makes some passing references to, to that. Obviously, that's going to be something that hopefully, within the future, we'll have to see how these two adjacent pieces of land see. But, you know, as far as the master plan is concerned, it would be helpful to see that there was, there is, you know, coordination, and at least some thought to how they interact, because it's not an independent entity. There are certain, you know, relationships that it's going to have with any of the develop that we're planning within the Army Engine Plant and any of the area in the South End, as well, our kind of conservation and development that we had set out by the board a few years ago. So, those are some of my first thoughts on this. Jay?
Yes, Jay Hibansky here. And I just wanted to, since Commissioner Baccola sent me his comments, and they're brief, I'll read them quickly for him, since he can't be here. My only comment would be that I'm in favor of improvement of runway 1129. It seems that improving, that improving would help with noise issues over Lordship and Milford. It looks, it looks like pilots also commented that they needed this runway. Also, I was hoping to see maybe an aviation-type, small trade school on the grounds, or maybe a restaurant included. Thank you, Commissioner Baccola. I'll also add that, you know, this was discussed by the Zoning Board of Appeals earlier this month. They had an extensive list of recommendations and comments, as did the Planning Commission, who I believe discussed it last night. I have them here if the board is interested in me reading them, otherwise I can send them out separately.
Yeah, I'll just go over them quickly, because I have them in front of me, Jay, from the BZA, and appreciate their comments, so.
Sure.
And some of you, especially Mr. Vigliotti, you and I haven't been on the, having been on the Planning Commission, will recognize a couple of these. So, "The plan does not consider coastal resilience efforts undertaken by the town of Stratford to improve coastal resiliency in the area. The plan does not consider coastal roadway protection and improving access from the site in weather-related events." That's an excellent point. "Plan does not discuss flood mitigation and drainage concerns that are currently present at the site. The plan does not consider potential impacts of sea level rise at the site. Plan does not consider the activity of migratory bird populations at the Stewart B. McKinney National Wildlife Refuge. Plan does not discuss impacts of runway slash airport expansion on the local and regional transportation network. Plan does not discuss anticipated infrastructure roadway costs to the town of Stratford. Plan does not consider how it can contribute to the town's greenway network currently under planning and design, and how the airport might be a partner in the expansion. Plan does not discuss the economic development impacts to be anticipated by the town of Stratford. The plan is taking an island planning approach, giving little to no consideration of any planning initiative outside the confines of the airport. A more comprehensive approach should be taken to promote a more equitable planning effort. More details should be given regarding how potential aircraft volume increases might affect the quality of life in the area, air quality, local flora and fauna, and other environmental resources." Anybody have any thoughts on those particular points?
Is that just zoning, or, yeah, somebody's not muted. Hear a lot of background noise. Is that Jay?
Go ahead, Mike.
Is that, was that just planning, or was that BZA as well?
I think that was BZA, correct, Jeff?
Jay Hibansky here. Yes, that was the Zoning Board of Appeals, and I also have some comments from the Planning Commission from last night as well.
Curious to hear those as well, yeah.
Do you have those, Jeff, for planning?
Sure. Would you like me to read them in?
Yeah.
Okay, this is from the, this is from the October 26th, 2020 Planning Commission meeting. "The Planning Commission has offered the following recommendations regarding the Sikorski Airport Master Plan Update. Number one, the commission members unanimously agreed that the recommendations offered by the Zoning Board of Appeals on this matter echoes their, their concerns as well. Number two, the environmental justice section within the plan should be revised, since it is stated incorrectly on page 5-9, Section 5.3.2 of the document, that there are no minority or low-income environmental justice populations existing in the immediate vicinity of BDR. Stratford's Opportunity Zone Census Track, which is Census Track 804, is located immediately north of the airport on the other side of Access Road, and has a minority population concentration of 65.7% and a median household income of $54,000, $54,643. Number three, the town, there is town-owned property to the northwest corner of the airport site, where the proposed runway 1129 expansion is proposed. The Planning Commission would like to know if this parcel will be taken by the airport. Also, wetlands exist in this location. The Planning Commission would like to know how the impacts to wetlands will be mitigated here. Number four, there was no expansion of the property, there was a no-expansion-of-the-property contract signed between Stratford and Bridgeport for the airport property. The Planning Commission needs further clarification on the status of this agreement. Number five, there is no discussion on historical flooding events on the property and the amount of losses/flood claims incurred within the plan update document. Since this property will be heavily flooded in the potential sea-level rise scenario, as discussed in the town's coastal resiliency plan, the commission members request this information, as well as information on how potential flooding impacts will be mitigated on this property. Commission members strongly encourage the airport master planning team to review the town's coastal resiliency plan officially adopted in 2017, and explain within the document as to how some of the proposed coastal flooding mitigation recommendations will be addressed on/near the Sikorski Airport." There's three more. Number six, "All drainage connecting to the town's sewer system must comply with the town's municipal stormwater MS4 permit requirements." The commission members, number seven, "Commission members are interested in knowing how the proposal will impact traffic on local roadways nearby and the town's economy." Lastly, number eight, "In general, the commission members are concerned that almost 70% of the master plan process has taken place without significant involvement of residents in the planning process. Revising the environmental justice section in the plan, as suggested, could perhaps encourage more broad public participation in the planning process." And that's it. Thank you.
Very well done. Okay, members want to comment on either of the planning or Board of Zoning Appeals recommendations, or add anything to that?
Well, just, I mean, based on my reading of it, and, you know, which my perception was that they really don't care about Stratford, and the comments of the other commissions, who really seem that they've left out a lot of parts, don't have Stratford's best interest in, in our, in, in any way, shape, or form. It's kind of, kind of rings true through all the comments made throughout for, for everybody. And I think everybody's pointed out different parts that they, they find error or fault in. So, I, I mean, I think, I think if you take the, all the comments and line them all up, it kind of shoots down the whole plan. It really doesn't seem like a good, well-thought-out plan. And I don't know if it's initial stages, or, you know, this is really getting towards the end, but they really just, they haven't involved Stratford. They, they don't have a lot of consideration for us, you know, that, whether it's the environment, the quality of life, they talked about filling in the wetlands, a bunch of other things. It, it just seems like, you know, they're, they're going to, they're trying to just trudge ahead and, and hell with Stratford. So, it's typical of what's happened at that airport. It's, it's the way they behave, and I don't see this as, as in any way, shape, or form beneficial to Stratford, or, or our quality of life, or our economy. So, I don't know how it benefits us in any way. It, it seems more detrimental than anything else.
So, on that point, Jay, maybe you can answer, maybe you can't. So, did they really just develop this by themselves? I mean, it doesn't seem like they, were they in touch at all with your office, or with the administration at all? Or was it just something that they did solo? Are they required, who are they filing this with, just out of curiosity, too?
There, I believe they're filing it with the, the port of, I think they have to file it with the Port Authority. But they have been in communication, myself, some of the mayor's staff, some other critical town staff have been part of the technical advisory committee for this, the planning process. So, we're invited to every meeting, and we go, we all go to every meeting. And what I would say is that the comments that have been made by the Zoning Board of Appeals, the comments that have been made by the Planning Commission, and the comments that have been made by the Zoning Commission tonight, have been voiced to the planning team since, since day one of, of our participation. You know, we haven't seen those incorporated into the plan yet. You know, I think part of the hope is that we, with a significant public comment that they receive, that that, that this starts to make it into their plan, and they kind of go back to the drawing board on a few things here. You know, a lot of, a lot of, a lot of the things that we heard were, well, you know, this isn't a coastal resiliency plan, this is an airport master plan, which I, I, and my staff disagree with wholeheartedly, that a master plan is, is just that. It is a comprehensive plan of how your site interacts with the town, the neighborhood, how it's connected to all, how, how it's interconnected to the local economy, how it's interconnected to the supply chain. We just feel like there was, there were some things that were left out that would really make the plan beneficial, not only to Bridgeport, but Stratford and the region, if, if there was, if there was a bit more detail in some areas. So, you know, I think you all have really hit on, even before reading in some of the other comments, I mean, you were essentially summarizing what I heard from the other boards as well. Just so everyone understands as well, we're not giving a formal letter. I will compile, I mean, I'm, I'm not trying to end the discussion, just so you're aware how, how this is going to work. I'm compiling all of the information, and I will be sending it to the mayor's office, and they will be putting it in a master letter to the planning team. So, what the Planning Commission did, as you saw, I mean, they said, they basically backed up the Zoning Board of Appeals and said they agree with all those comments. If the Zoning Commission feels that's appropriate, they may want to do that the same for the Planning Commission, as well as the Zoning Board of Appeals. And then I'll include the additional comments that I heard, mentioned here, that I did specifically hear, and some of those other that I did specifically here in some of those other notes. So, uh, with that, I'll, I'll turn it back to you.
Jay, Mike Henry. And, and I would, you know, I would agree with all the other parts and all the concerns, uh, of all the other commissions. But my, my other question would be, is the, I mean, and, and this affects all of Stratford, but mostly it affects, affects the folks in Lordship. You know, I mean, that's, that's their backyard. Is there any point in this process? I know you guys, based on your comments, you guys have been involved or at least invited to the meetings. Apparently, you know, your involvement is to voice your concerns and, and then they just ignore you and go on with what they're doing. But is there any point in this process where the, the residents of Stratford will have an opportunity to, to be notified of, to participate in and to comment on any of this so, so that, you know, at, at some point they feel like at least they've had some say and had an opportunity to voice their concern and, and propose some opposition?
Uh, Jay Habansky here, so, so yes, and I should have mentioned that when, when Commissioner Silhavy asked me before. Um, so we were direct, we had direct invites as members of the Technical Advisory Committee, um, and stakeholders, but these meetings were all open to the public. You know, I, I can't speak to how, um, they were attempting to disseminate the information, uh, where they were advertising, what local stakeholders they were engaging to say, hey, we understand you're a megaphone here for the town. Please let your constituents, your parishioners, whoever, let them know that we will be hosting a meeting, uh, at X, Y, and Z. So, you know, I attended several meetings at, uh, the Bird's Eye Complex. All were open to the public. Uh, I, I attended, um, several meetings at St. Joseph's Church, uh, down in Lordship. Um, and, um, all were open to the public. Uh, what I'll say is that a vast majority of the, of the folks that attended were either part of the Technical Advisory Committee, so town staff, as well as airport staff. Um, and then, uh, there was a strong, uh, strong, uh, presence of the airport users and the friends of the airport. So quite a few pilots, um, quite a few folks who are invested in, uh, in the, in Stratford and, and the airport and who really knew, understood the nuts and bolts of how the airport works and, um, were really, um, not critical, but they really understood a lot of the, you know, apron improvements that, you know, I mean, I'm a general planner, there's a whole specific sect of airport planning that's just out of my, my expertise. But these plant, these, uh, these pilots really understood what was being proposed, so. Um, you know, they gave their comments, um, and, um, you know, I think some were listened to and probably some weren't. Um, you know, in, in general, and we got to keep in mind as well that, I mean, you can't nail down every single detail in a master plan. Uh, otherwise it would be as, you know, a three-hundred-page document like this.
Yeah.
Uh, but you, you know, I mean, our, our, our plan of conservation and development, um, you know, it's a hundred and twenty-five pages, but there's quite a bit of detail. There's quite a bit of, uh, you know, intertwining all the different things that go on in the town and goals, goals for the town, uh, and objectives. And I just think that, um, you know, some of those things, some of those things were missing here.
Well, that's what I was saying, with the, uh, it seemed like there was, the one goal was the restoration of passenger service, which I, I'm trying to remember, it ended, I want to say somewhere ninety-eight, ninety-nine. It's probably referencing that, but, you know, I don't think it's been there in this century. And, you know, it's like, okay, if that doesn't happen, what other options do you have, you know? Um, go ahead.
Jay here, yeah, and, and you'd almost have to assume that, and, and this is speculative, but you'd almost have to assume that they, they've got a commercial carrier who's interested, or who was interested when they started this process. Um, and thus the, uh, thus the motivation to, to quickly immobilize for the master plan.
Yeah.
But it, it also seems strange, I know you, you said that, you know, large contingency of airport users were, were in attendance at those meetings, you know, and perhaps they were invited because they thought they'd be a, uh, a complimentary ear, ear or a, a, uh, a happy participant to, to the things that are going on. But the fact that no or very little Stratford or Lordship residents attended either says, you know, for whatever reason, they had no idea or they did not really understand what was going on and, and that this would be their opportunity to speak out and have some say in it. I mean, it just, you, you talk to any Stratford, any Lordship resident and, and they're very vocal and very emotional about the airport, so. And I know when we've looked at other pieces of it at, at various times throughout the twenty years I've been on town boards, whenever it came to the airport, they were out, as with Roosevelt Forest in the North End or, you know, other, other parts. Um, so I'm just very surprised that they wouldn't be there and, and I don't know how, uh, but, and I don't know if that falls on Bridgeport or if that falls on Stratford's shoulders, but making sure that the people of those, those districts and areas are fully aware of the meetings and, and the importance and, and the ability. And, and, you know, perhaps having a strong contingency from Lordship voicing their concern would add to the, uh, add to the strength of what we're saying. Right, so whether it's through, you know, I never heard of those meetings either. You know, the first I've heard of them was, was when you mentioned it, so, um, you know, through town, you know, we, we never talked about it on the zoning commission, I, that I recall, that these meetings were taking place, so. Um, you know, I don't know if that's, that's the administration's fault, if that's Bridgeport's fault, but I think they should be, whether, you know, through the mayor's report, which comes out through emails every day, through, you know, the Stratford Patch, whatever it is, that these, these are widely publicized and, and known that it is a public meeting and that they will have an opportunity to voice their concerns and, and speak on the issues that concern them.
Yeah, I agree, because I, I, I know, I also feel, I know a lot of people in the Lordship area and they're very active and,
Oh, yeah.
and they're, they're very, very involved in the community. And for me to know these people and them not to know and myself as well, like, uh, Mr. Hendrick said, uh, they, they had no interest in letting the public in because there would be a lot more concerns that they would have to address. And I don't think they wanted to from this master plan, wanted to address the concerns of the community in the first place. And that's what it seems to be also.
Okay. Any final comments? Mr. Vigliotti, Mr. Freded, Mr. Wynn, anyone else?
Nope, I think everybody pretty much covered everything.
Okay, Jay, do you have enough for, uh, enough material?
I certainly do, so I'll, I'll, I'll put that letter, we only have a day or two. Uh, I think we have till November first.
Yeah.
So, so I'll put it together first thing tomorrow morning and, um, Chris, I'll, I'll send it over to you just to take a quick look at it for me before I submit it, okay?
Okay, sounds good. Okay, moving on, uh, vote on our twenty-twenty-one meeting calendar. Um,
Hold on, Chris.
Uh, Mr. W, yeah, he had some.
Yeah, I just wanted to, are we going to get a chance to see the letter when it's, uh, before it's sent? Not that I want to approve it or anything, but I'd just be curious to see what the final product is.
You know, Jay, why don't you send it out to everybody and that way, if anybody's, um, uh, sentiments are, are not characterized correctly, uh, you're only going to be able to get like a one-day turnaround on it because I know we have to get it back to them by, what, Monday? Jay?
Yeah, yes, I mean, I think I want to get, because they still, they still have to compile it, so I got to get it to them, I think, tomorrow afternoon.
Okay, just send it out to everybody and everybody just, uh, um, do me a favor, time-box it, say comments due by X Friday morning eight AM, just so that they can be clear that, uh, you know, it's time-sensitive.
I'll send it out to everybody.
Okay, thanks, Jim, appreciate that.
All right, thank you, Jay.
Okay, um, the twenty-twenty-one meeting calendar was distributed. We're basically going to stay on our same schedule for, uh, next year. Um, where we'll have our, our public hearing toward the end, on the last, uh, Wednesday of the month. And, uh, the administrative meetings will be as needed, but we're reserving that, uh, second Wednesday as well. And, um, I don't believe we had any holiday corrections on there, but, uh, so I think it should be pretty straightforward. Anybody have any questions on that? If not, we'll take a motion to approve.
Take a motion to approve the meeting schedule for twenty-twenty-one?
Mr. Hendrick, second Mr. Vigliotti, any comments? If not, all in favor, say aye.
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 Carries unanimously. Uh, anything on goal settings, Jay, or any members of the commission? Jay?
Uh, so, um, one update, I'm glad we had a chance to look at the meeting, look at the meeting schedule for next year because, uh, we didn't get any applications in for November, so, uh, unless something pressing comes up, uh, we don't have much on, we won't have anything on the agenda and this would have been the only thing we would have to meet for, so.
Excellent, that is, that's the day anyway, I was last going to ask you about that. I'm not sure if town hall's open.
Yeah, town hall wasn't open, but I was ready to work if we needed to. So, uh, it sounds like as of now, we won't have to. Um, and that way, anyone that has a day off will be able to enjoy the, the entire day off, maybe. Um, but I would say for the commission to keep their eyes open, I'll, I'll talk with Chairman Silhavy and, um, we'll confirm whether or not we're going to host, host or cancel the meeting and then I'll send, send out a notice.
Okay.
But I have nothing else for tonight.
Okay. So then we will take that motion to adjourn. My name's Francis, second Mr. Vigliotti, I saw your hand, all in favor, say aye.
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 若有，无有， carries unanimously, we're out of here at seven forty-three. Have a good evening and, uh, we'll see everyone soon. Bye-bye.
Good night.
Or good night.
Okay.